So if we...
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming. Could the leader of the Cub Scout troop just tell us where the fellows are from? What they're up to?
Yes, I am the Cub Master for PAC 108, Costa Mesa, Newport Beach. Nate Stephens is our Den Leader. And one of their requirements for the year to complete their Arrow of Light adventure is to meet with them. And we thank you for your time in putting out some time for us. Also felt it would be good for them to experience this.
Yes, we hope it is a good experience. Thank you very much for coming up. It was an honor to meet you guys. And I was a Cub Scout. And I just really appreciate you being here and participating in scouting, which is a great thing, a very good thing, and you know that. And we've got an outstanding scout here tonight that we're going to recognize in just a few minutes. So move on to item number one. We're now going to current business. Before we do that, Madam Clerk, I guess the roll call is in order.
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. So the first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. So Councilmember Brenner, do you need clarification regarding any items?
No. I can get my note to open.
My question is, if I want a short report from a staff member on various things, I don't necessarily want to pull it, but I think there's some things that need to have a staff member talk about. Do I have to pull it from the consent calendar? Or can I just ask a staff member to give us more information on something?
I think let's do it now.
Okay. Because I don't think they need to be pulled, but there's a few. Okay.
Do I do it now?
Did you want to go ahead and ask those questions?
Should I ask them now? Well, I would rather that they give their answers during our council session because, for instance, one of them is on the paving of PCH, and I need Dave to tell the public what they can expect from that. So I'd rather that they would hear it during our council session.
Okay. We'll wait till then. Councilmember O'Neil? Councilmember Dixon?
No.
Councilmember Blahm?
I have none.
Councilmember Duffield?
I have none.
Mayor Protem will do?
I have none.
And I have none. So the next item is a great one. This is a certificate of recognition to Jeffrey Herkins of Boy Scout Troop 106 for earning 138 merit badges. And that is quite an accomplishment. And I'd love to, I think all the council, all of us here would love to hear from you if you would care to come up to the podium. When did you start on this journey?
I recently turned 18, but I became a Boy Scout in, or it was like seven or eight years ago. I think it was when I was...
Was it 10 and 1/2?
Yeah, 10 and 1/2. And I did Cub Scouts before then.
And was that your goal, is to get all the merit badges?
Originally, it was to get the Eagle. And then after I accomplished that, I decided to go for all of them as well.
That's just incredible accomplishment. And which were the more difficult badges?
I was just talking to the Cub Scouts about that. I said like scuba was a tough one, not only because it's pretty physical, but also for that one, I went to Hawaii. So it also was like a money cost and time.
Yeah.
Because some of them you could do at your house. And it doesn't take as much, you know, time or effort or physical work. But then there's some like snow sports where you have to ski or snowboard. And then there's also ones like water sports where you have to, like I did, or there's many water sport ones. There's like kayak, kayaking, canoeing. And then there's like jet skiing, or not jet skiing. I forgot what it's called, the one where you're riding like the skis on the water.
Water skiing.
Water skiing, yes, sorry.
Okay.
But yeah. And then there's also more mind challenging ones or memorization, like pioneering. You have to learn a lot of different knots. And some of those can be tough to memorize, especially when you have to learn like 10 or 15 different ones.
Can you tie a bowline? That's a nautical line.
I believe, yeah.
That would be, that would be a good picture.
I believe so.
Right. Yeah. Round the tree, back in the hole.
Yeah, yeah. That one's, yeah, that one has a little saying to it, so.
Right. It's helpful.
It's easier than the others, yeah.
That's great. So what's next for you?
I'm currently a senior in high school. And once I graduate, I haven't really decided what I want to do yet. But I've been taking real estate courses, so I'm planning on getting my license in. Since now I turn 18, I'm able to take the test and maybe start selling here.
Yeah. Well, I think you'll do very well.
Thank you.
Because you're obviously very persistent and very accomplished. So I'd like to just meet you over here by the flags and maybe your folks too. And we can do this ceremony with a certificate. And there's been some turbulent waters, but I think the key thing is that the parents and the people that are in scout leadership, all the people that contribute to it, it's just phenomenal. And it's got a culture like no other. And it's so important that it thrives and keeps moving forward because it teaches a lot of things that tend to get lost today in our society. And those values are so important to a successful life. So thank you to the leaders for the time and the effort. It's not only so great for these kids, but it's great for all of society. All right. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the Water Conservation Ordinance update from Mr. Vakoyevich.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good afternoon. Mark Vakoyevich, your Utilities Director. And to my left here, I have Stephen Catron, who's our Water Utilities Manager, also our Chief Water Operator. And then back here to my right is Sanjay Ghar, who is our consultant, who's helping us prepare the update to our Water Conservation Ordinance. We're going to go through an explanation of why we need to talk about this, what our current drought situation, current water supply and demand scenario is. And then we have some questions to ask council on, so we can then develop some policy questions so we can then go ahead and develop the ordinance. So as many of you know, the governors asked us all for a 15% voluntary water reduction. And we've all seen photos of the water reservoirs in Northern California. It's somewhat obvious with the lack of rain, information from the Colorado River as well. What's kind of unique is Orange County, Southern California, really positioned itself well at the start of this drought by filling up reservoirs, our groundwater basin. So we're in a better scenario than Northern California, for what that's worth. We're still being asked to cut. And of course, as the weather continues with lack of rain and precipitation in the north or the Colorado, we need to be prepared for what's coming next in terms of cuts. But here's just some historical usage. Right now, we're projecting about 15,000 acre feet for the year in terms of our current water use. You know, 20 years ago, we used 20,000 acre feet of water. And then pre the last drought, we were about 16,000 acre feet. And then during the drought, when we had all of our cuts, we got down to 13,000 acre feet. And acre foot is how water is sold and bought. It's, you know, 43,000 square, 43,560 square feet. It's basically like a football field without the end zone, one foot high. And then so if you figure a football field 15,000 feet high, that's how much water we used in Newport Beach. It's difficult to visualize, but maybe that gives you something to think about, so. But the likely future is for the drought to continue. And we were here back in June talking about, talking about our urban water management plan and our water shortage contingency plan. These were new state laws that said, hey, you need to update these plans every five years if we have a drought or if something very severe were to happen, let's just say major pipelines were to sever, and we had earthquakes and things like that. How would you deal with a 50% water cut? And those are some of the questions we answered in terms of our water shortage contingency plan. And the continuing piece of that was our Water Conservation Ordinance now, which is kind of the mechanism to actually do some of these things. Our current ordinance talks about all of these cuts, 10%, 20%, if needed. And it's based on people's past water usage in 2013. 2013 is now forever ago, and so we need to update that. And we'll talk about that. One easy way is to say, we're going to compare you to 2019 or 2020 usage. But we want to present some scenarios for you as well. And then back then, when we had that last drought, we were asked to cut 21 to 28%. It was difficult. You know, the first 10%, first 15% is very doable, but then you start beginning to lift very heavy after that when you're getting into the 20s. And ultimately, it was really the heavy enforcement that got us to that compliant percentage. Again, our Water Shortage Contingency Plan, but this is this middle block here is who should cut back? And we're going to be asking council to help us decide on some policy direction as far as priority of use and how do we allocate water by customer categories. The implementation side of it, fairly straightforward. We'll go over that, but I'm happy to take any comments on that. So customer categories. So this is important to visualize that we have all of these different categories of customers, you know, businesses, single-family residential, and multifamily as well, too. And then city accounts. And should we treat them all the same, or is there a difference to these? For example, someone might argue, well, a city account that provides a public park and, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people use that park should maybe have a different allocation than on private property. Or commercials should be maybe on the first tier versus landscaping and irrigation. And multifamily, where they don't have as much irrigation, landscaping, those could be different. And so if you can understand a scenario, if the state tells us, you need to cut 30% of your water usage here. So one formula is, we put 30% on each of those accounts, and everyone cuts 30%. But that's the balancing act of, is that too punitive, especially when you're considering businesses and multifamily that actually don't have much landscaping and things like that, too? And so we want to present, we want to present this as an approach, which is where we would actually go back and try to calculate on a system where we prioritize, you know, water for health and safety, economic development, kind of as the first priority uses, but discretionary water, which basically comes down to landscaping, would get a second, secondary or lower, or excuse me, a higher, lower priority, higher cut is the scenario. So do we cut each customer category by 30%? Or do we actually go back and figure out the nuances within the category? A simple way to understand that is this. If we're asked to cut 30%, do we tell our local hospital, you need to cut 30% as well? Likely, the answer is, is no, we're going to pick and choose, you know, especially on some of these priority properties. And that's what we're recommending, is we further go down the list based on that. And we'll come back to this question. So the next area is, how do we measure the water per account? So we have the global cut, but then it comes down to talking to each account holder, how much are you being asked to cut? And do we ask you to cut based on what you used last year or two years ago or an average historical use? Or do we use what's called a water budget? This is becoming more and more prevalent in the industry where you basically do calculations for how much water a typical home would use, assuming four people per house, or if you have more, then you get more. If you have less, then you can do less if you want to report it. And then we have outdoor measurements, right? We know, if you look at this little picture on the right, bottom right there, too, through aerial data that the state has generated for us, we have square footages for landscaping outside of basically all of these properties now. And then we have detailed information about what our weather is like. And it's kind of obvious, too, right? In the summertime, the weather is hotter, less, there's more evaporation, you use more water. And in the wintertime, it's cooler, you use less water. And, and so this is how this turns out. Here's another way to look at this. So the two math, it's a math equation, we love math right here, but it's how much you get indoors plus how much you get outdoors. So indoors, it's how many people live in the home, 55 gallons per person, and then days in a billing cycle. And that basically generates, like we said, 900 cubic feet, 6,700 gallons of water per month, just on the indoor usage. And then outdoor is how much landscaping you have. So if you have a small lot with little landscaping, you have little outdoor water. But if you have a big lot with landscaping, or you have a lot of, a small house with a lot of landscaping, you get more area. If you have a pool, you get more area and so on. And that all goes into the math equation to calculate this budget. So one of the game changers we have now in place is our digital water meters. So we're two-thirds of the way through our installation process in installing these digital meters. And this is the information that we can collect now on this. And it becomes a customer portal where they can see their water usage. So you can see this, this home right here used 1,500 gallons of water those first couple hours to water their irrigation. And then they used about 1,000 gallons the rest of the day. And I know I'm mixing cubic feet and gallons, but just to kind of give you a perspective. And was this going on the next day, next day, next day, you know? Or was it being adjusted through timers and different things like that? But this is clearly a high use there, too. And it becomes now available information so people can make decisions on their water use. And they can actually visualize it and quantify how much they use, whether it's their shower water or outdoor irrigation. The target, the highest water use from the data we see seems to be with residential outdoor water use. So that's, that's what we're seeing. So here's an example of a 30% cutback for historical use. Two homes, identical, right? Four people live there, each home, same lot size and everything like that. But one home user is, uses a lot of water, and hey, and that's their purview to use water. Our objective is to provide water. Now, on the right side here, this, this water user is very efficient. But now we have a drought scenario that comes into place, and we're asked, okay, everybody, everybody needs to cut now by 30%. And you can see on the left-hand side, if you're somewhat inefficient or a high user, it's a little easier to cut. If you're already efficient and you're asked to cut 30%, it becomes a little more difficult. And then in a water budget scenario, you calculate these two lots, you give them the same, same budgets because they're nearly identical. But the heavy lifting, the heavy cutting is done by the high water user and the low water user, the efficient user, you know, is not really required to cut anything. They may, just because of all the public information and things like that going on. But there's some logic to this. A lot of agencies are going towards a water budget type of calculation. And, and when it comes to historical water use, it's easy to understand. That's the given thing. What you used two years ago versus what you're using now, it's a quick, easy to pick up, understand scenario. But like we talked about, it could reward, reward high water users, can penalize low water users. Either way, there's appeals because people will have different scenarios, you know, how many people live there, my landscaping measurement is off, or whatever it is, or the house was under construction, grandma and Eddie lived there that then, or didn't, or the kids moved out, whatever it is. And we deal with that. And we, and we take those in and go through the appeals. The budget standard, which is indoor and outdoor, more difficult to administer, takes time to understand. Now, but it does seemingly create a consistent standard for all customers, and you still will expect appeals. Now, one thing that's been going on on our budgets is on all of our utility bills, we have been posting a budget, a calculated budget on all the utility bills for the last year and a half. So it's on people's bills if they're looking at it. Granted, not everyone's looking at it, but at least we're trying to, been trying to get that information out there. And I'm going to change gears, and then we're going to wrap it back to kind of the final closing here, too. But then the last piece of this is education and enforcement, right? So our first start is always education. Hey, we have a drought, we need to send out messaging. We leverage all of the messaging that's going to happen with the region, the state, all the news, all the billboards on the freeways. But at the end of the day, we need to send out direct customer notifications to them, letters, emails, postcards, you know, our website, and then also advertise our online water, our online portal where they can pull up their account and their water use. And then at the end, if all else fails and people can't get to the number that we're asked to get to, then the code enforcement process begins. You have two parts of code enforcement. One is, is, you know, if you are violating a strict prohibition, right? So you're, you're basically wasting water and washing down the street or something like that, right? That's a strict prohibition. And then you have, if we're in a drought scenario and we're asking people to tear down, and then we start sending you warnings and notices, and that's when the infractions continue through a standard code enforcement process. That's what we did last time. The drought stages all start here at city council. We come to city council through a public hearing and say, we have been asked, here's the reason why, to go to drought stage one or three, or whatever the scenario is. And we have a public hearing, we begin immediately all the public outreach and information, leverage statewide, and then direct communication with all of our customers, and then our newest tool, which is the online access to their water use and so on. So tonight, we're going to be asking you to give us some policy direction on this. And then from there, we can go back and conduct some analysis, present it to the Water Quality Committee, and then finalize, you know, our Water Conservation Ordinance. So in summary, here are the straw poll questions, and I'm happy to go back to any slides or answer questions, but during a water shortage, should we prioritize water use? And then during a water shortage, should we use a budget-based standard or historical water use standard? And anything else you would like us to consider when it comes to, you know, an enforcement process? And that concludes my presentation very quickly, and happy to get some feedback and answer
Ms. Brenner.
Mark, someone was telling me just this weekend that they got rid of their grass and got a credit for that. Is that something, a program that is available to our citizens, if they got artificial grass?
Yes, yeah. So you can go on our website, and you can see the different rebate programs that are available. So they still have those out there, and we have links on our website to do that. And some people are still continuing to do that.
Okay. And, you know, one of my concerns is, we don't want to damage our trees. I mean, the tree canopy is such an important part of our environmental sensitivity, and so we're not getting to the part where we're getting rid of any of our trees or anything, are we?
No, no.
So...
And that's a balancing act, like we found that during the last drought in our medians, where we had to turn off all the water in our medians. And then so we had to build extra piping to make sure we had water for the trees, or we had to water them with water trucks and so on.
Yes.
To do that, too. And it depends what level we're at, right? If it's an easy, you know, again, 10% is relatively easy. When you start going higher up the chain of percentages, it becomes more and more difficult to do.
And what about this water budget? How is that determined for each residence? Do you start out with a standard and then with appeals or with questions, then they can get alterations of that? Or how is that determined?
Correct. So the first part is your indoor use. And we give a standard for people per house. And then if you have more than, just like all of the other agencies, you come in and you say, yeah, I have six. And then we change the number, and you get the additional two people that live there for indoor. Outdoor, we have measured your landscape area or your pool through aerials, and we approximately know how many square feet of landscaping. We know what the weather is like, and then you get an allocation for that outdoor water use as well.
That sounds fascinating. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark. A couple of questions. Could you update the community on the digital metering? I don't think I have it. I haven't seen anything. But first, a couple of questions. MyWaterNB, is that the name of the app? Because I know it's on my phone. Is that operable, operating?
It is, it is, yeah. And so what we're working on is to be able to interconnect all of the online portals through, so it can go through one place, especially connected with your billing. MyWaterNB, Stephen, refresh my memory, that's not connected to your billing.
I thought it would be. No?
I don't believe so.
Oh. Or your water usage, anyway. No? I thought that was the purpose of it.
Councilmember Dixon, I don't know that answer that question. But I, but what we will have in place is, so your billing and your water use and your previous water use will all be interconnected into one portal that you can have access to, so you can pay your bill, and then click on a tab and go without a separate password and look at your water usage.
So that would, that would be the goal, actually?
Yes, yeah. And then your first question on the digital meters, which we called AMI, Advanced Meter Infrastructure. We're almost two-thirds of the way through installation, so we're making good progress there. We're running into supply chain issues in terms of meters. That's why we haven't finished, for example, Lidl Island, because they're having a tough time getting parts for a certain size meter.
On some ship out there?
Probably. Yeah. That's what we're being told, and from all of our suppliers, even to get conventional meters, there's a backlog on those things, so.
Okay. And just a couple of technical questions. On historical use, I mean, in our community, while there are many people who have our long-term residents, there's a lot of short-term use, of course. How, and then people have moved since 2013. So is that really a relevant base, a baseline to go back to a time where it could have been a prior owner, for example?
That's the number one. Those are some of the big challenges with using prior historic use, you know? I lived there part-time in the past, I'm a new owner. How do you establish that use? And with all the changes in people's lives... Councilmember Dixon, I don't know that answer to that question. But what we will have in place is, so your billing and your water use and your previous water use will all be interconnected into one portal that you can have access to, so you can pay your bill, and then click on a tab and go without a separate password and look at your water usage.
So that would be the goal, actually?
Yes, yes. And then your first question on the digital meters, which we called AMI, Advanced Meter Infrastructure. We're almost two-thirds of the way through installation, so we're making good progress there. We're running into supply chain issues in terms of meters. That's why we haven't finished, for example, Lidl Island, because they're having a tough time getting parts for a certain-sized meter.
On some ship out there?
Probably. Yeah. That's what we're being told, and from all of our suppliers. Even to get conventional meters, there's a backlog on those things, so.
Okay. And just a couple of technical questions. On historical use, I mean, in our community, while there are many people who have our long-term residents, there's a lot of short-term use, of course. And then people have moved since 2013. So is that really a relevant base, a baseline, to go back to a time where it could have been a prior owner, for example?
That's the number one. Those are some of the big challenges with using prior historic use, you know? I lived there part-time in the past, I'm a new owner. How do you establish that use? And with all the changes in people's lives and things like that, you know, remodeling, construction, you know, we didn't use the house for that period of time, you know? All of those questions come into play. And they all go through an appeals process. And the appeals process is, I would say, was very generous back at the last time. People present a case, what they have, then we make that adjustment, and it goes forward pretty easily. The appeals process for when you actually get a violation because you're a high-user or you're watering on the wrong day or something like that was a little more of a litmus test where it was very straightforward, you know?
One thing that, I mean, of course, we do now have this experience of a few years ago, so there's a lot to build on. One of the programs that you and your staff did that I think pleased the residents and also was hopeful to reduce water usage is really work on a voluntary basis with residents who requested a service analysis of their water usage. And I know you and I've had this conversation, or at the time we did, that many times there was a water leak somewhere, it was underground, and they did not know it, but the meter kept running. So is this going to be part of your program as well to consult with residents who request consultation?
Absolutely. So there's two parts to that. One is the automatic leak detection that we're finding now. So as we put in these automated meters, we're finding, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% to 5% of these homes have continuous water usage leaks. And then we notify them and try to work with them on that, so they can try to find out where the leak is, get their plumber involved, and fix that. The other part of it is, is we're trying to do some proactive outreach when people have a high water use, something has gone very high over the last billing period. And then also, we're looking at now with this, the graph that we're showing, that we showed you in the previous slide, reaching out to people individually and say, hey, your water usage is high. If you'd like us to come out and meet with you, here's what the budget is, here's what the average is. We're also trying to put it into a measurement, a quantity, that people can try to visualize and understand. Because water is difficult to visualize in terms of size. If I tell you 1,000 gallons, it's, what does that mean? But if I tell you, you know, you used two swimming pools worth of water last month, maybe it rings a little more true, you know? I like using tanker trucks, but they told me that one doesn't work, so I don't know. But so trying to get visualized that, to maybe get people's attention and say, hey, there's something else I can do. But we spend a lot of time on customer service calls, helping people, pre-notifying them. They call us, we call them, we notify them that there's something going on with your high-water use out there.
Well, I do remember, and commend you and your staff, I would get these positive comments that they would call and within, or their call was answered immediately or responded to very shortly. So our level of customer service or the expectation of our residents is certainly high. But I know you always have delivered on that, you and your staff. Well, so this is, we're going into a difficult phase here, and we all have to do our part. Thank you.
Mr. Muldoon.
So, I'm sorry, I was coming in. So 30% reduction, is that actually what we would expect to see? Or do we just, is that a number we're kind of throwing out there right now?
That's a number we're throwing out. So last time, we started out, the first number that came from the state was 21%. And that was for, was it three months? So it's 28% for nine months, then they lowered it down to 21% and then to 15%. So I think somewhere in that 20 to 30 band is very reasonable for this next year, in terms of it being likely, a likely scenario.
Would that be statewide, or are they going to do it specific to each water district?
So what they do is, is they give each water district a certain allocation. And so we do receive a credit because of all the recycling that we do as, within the Orange County Water District basin, for our groundwater replenishment system, where we recycle all of that water and so on. So they have their overarching number, but they have now, and have prepared for each agency, certain allocations.
So in the, certain allocations or certain percentage reductions?
I'm sure, percentage reductions, yeah.
Okay. So they say, hey, the state says certain percentage reduction. We say, okay, we get to pick the year. So what do the last few years look like in terms of total amount of water used in 2020, 2019, 2018?
If I remember this correctly, okay. So yeah, it's about 15,000 acre feet this year. The last two years before that, we used a little bit less, maybe about 14,500. So that's where the numbers are at, approximately.
Could you go back to that slide?
Sure.
There was a slide earlier that showed how we were doing in past years. Got it?
We're about 15,000 at the, right in the middle of the drought when we had all of our reductions, we got down to 13,000. The last two previous years, 14,500 were about the averages. Now, weather is a factor, too. So just for example, a couple of weekends ago, when we had kind of the hot weekend, you know, our water usage shot up 20% just for the weekend. And so that's a factor in there.
Okay. So when you say 15K, was that this 2021 or 2020?
That's 2021 fiscal year. So that includes up until June 30th.
Got it. Okay. So if we chose that as the baseline, and just said, okay, this is the baseline. So let's go back, sorry, let's go back to the straw polls, so now that I have a better idea of where we are in the last few years.
And just to clarify, too, we have our overarching how much we use, but then we need to dissect it to the account level.
Oh, no, I understand that. So when we're looking at prioritizing water use, other than a hospital, what else would we be looking at in terms of high-use water users that we'd want to prioritize, allowing them not to reduce?
So commercial businesses, perhaps like restaurants and other, you know, medical facilities, maybe they get a percentage of, let's say, everyone else gets 30, they get a percentage of 10. They don't necessarily have to get zero, but we, as, if a budget scenario is where we want to go, then we would go back in and try to figure out that formula ahead of time. And so we can present it ahead of time, as opposed to it being game-day decisions where we're like, okay, now we need to cut, how are we going to do this? And everyone would still be asked to cut something, but the businesses could be different. And same thing with multifamily, you know, because they have less irrigation. But in multifamily housing, they do have an irrigation meter, you know, for their common area, and that would have whatever the percentage that we select.
Got it. All right. I'm not really sure what to do with the prioritizing, but right now, before people have received their smart meter access, I'd still want to go based on a baseline instead of a water budget. And then on the standard code enforcement process, seems right, and it's what people would expect, so that's where I would be.
Mr. Muldoon.
For that, for the baseline, we had a cooler summer, and it was noticeably lower That baseline's internal, correct? There's no consequence from the state saying, you picked the wrong baseline year and you're not measuring it correctly and we're going to punish you?
That's correct. So that's an internal measurement now. But what they give us is yet to be seen.
Okay. That makes sense. To go to the good question that was asked about programs for artificial turf, do you know the details of what those rebate programs look like, Mark?
I don't know the specifics. But basically, it's based on a square footage, so you get anywhere from $1 to $3 per square foot of a reimbursement.
And because we're the water supplier, does that come through the city?
It comes through our regional partners, basically through Metropolitan Water District of Orange County.
Okay.
And they get also then grants either from the state or from Metropolitan themselves.
So my guess is probably a pretty flush fund, given those entities. Is that accurate?
I mean, there's still money available there, yes.
Yeah. I like the educational approach. When we did this last time, do we do mass flyers for the residents?
Yes, we did. We did flyers and postcards, and we did a lot of signage at entrances to tracks and all the medians. And we had, you know, thermometer gauges of how much water we've cut and saved. We did a lot, you know? But we also leveraged the state information that was out there, too.
I'm just wondering, I like also the mention, I think Councilman Dixon said, the analysis. If we were to do a flyer this time, and if there was an emphasis placed on one, the program that allows rebates to educate the residents, along with an invitation for them to have the service analysis provided, I could see a lot of people, and it comes from the city, with the city seal on it, to have a lot of credibility, and they might consider doing natural turf or having the analysis, when they normally wouldn't. And that's preferred to me over calling out individual users. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. So mine goes closer to the prioritization of how we work to regulate businesses that are busy already. And so, I mean, the question starts formulating my mind. When we look at salons or grocery stores or restaurants, and we ask them to cut down on water usage, how does that affect the other agencies that are also regulating them? I mean, so when it comes to the salons, you know, whether it's, we're no longer doing hair washings or grocery stores, we no longer do pre-cut food, or for restaurants, the health department no longer has a say in what we're supposed to be doing. And so it just strikes me that it's a really, a really tough position for everyone to be in. And clearly, we don't want to put all of the onus on the residents. But there has to be a certain point where, if we're getting busier in the commercial sector, how do we adjust that? And how do we adjust that to both be on, you know, the safe and equitable side? But I just have a hard time understanding how we're able to cut water to certain institutions that provide a service to the residents and still try to maintain the safety level that they're supposed to due to what is already implemented from other agencies. And so, you know, as often is the problem on this dais, we're constantly dealt with a hand on one side and a hand on the other, and we have conflicting agencies asking us conflicting things. And so I just, I bring that up mainly because, from a business perspective, it would be very hard for us to cut water usage, because we aren't, you know, there's not a lot of extraneous use going on at that point. And so, you know, and so I'm not sure. I think it's really, what I'm bringing back to the rest of the council is that I just want to make that point clear, is that, you know, we're not getting slower. Everyone, and, you know, as the markets are building again, we're getting busier, and as water reductions are necessary, are we washing less dishes? You know, do we not fill those three bays? I think, are we mopping less? It all of a sudden bodes an entirely different question, that this isn't about irrigating our plants and taking a longer shower. It all of a sudden takes us to a point of safety and sanitation. And I think that's where the question really, really hits closest to me, is that, yeah, I mean, I'm as guilty as anyone, I should definitely take a shorter shower, but it's warm and I'm tired and, you know, it's cozy in there. But I also don't want to put all the onus back on the residents. So, you know, I think we're looking for any advice, because you guys are definitely the experts in this department. But I just see, I see a big problem if we have a unilateral decision when it comes to both commercial and residential.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm still perplexed as to what we're asking, because you, the past drought, you guys did great. And I'm just wondering, what is different about this drought that's, we can't incorporate what you learned in the past with this one versus the last one? Is there something I'm missing in here that the state is putting on you that they didn't the last time?
Good question, Councilmember Duffield. They are going to be asking more information from us.
Okay.
And we do have more information. And that's kind of the difference maker.
Oh, okay.
And of that, when the drought was happening there, and I was on the public works end of things back then, too, but I remember it, I was involved in all of those meetings, too. There was lots and lots of decisions that had to be made on the fly. And appeals were flying all over the place, right? Because especially, I'm an efficient water user and you're asking me to cut 30%? And I already take a shower every three days, all right, you know, all that kind of thing. And I guess what we're trying to present here, too, is that, you know, it's, and like Councilmember Blom said, you know, the balance there between businesses, but landscaping is where we see probably the greatest ability to reduce water. And that's where, you know, all the data's pointing us towards. And, you know, there's, some people do it really well because they've changed their timers, or changed their landscaping, or put in the efficient things. And some people do it really well, where they're very happy with light green grass, you know? And other people maybe tell their landscaper, make sure it's, it is green as can be, and sure enough, that uses more water. So, and compared to their neighbors. And now we have that information. I think that the only difference here really is, for efficient water users, and that's where the budget comes into place. So if you're already efficient, should you already be, should you be asked to cut more? That's the balancing act, I think.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon.
We talk about artificial turf, and I know we've replaced natural grass in a number of our parks. Have we been making, are we significantly different than we were in the last drought period? Do we have more artificial turf in public spaces, as well as in private places?
Well, we certainly have it more in the private properties, you know? We see it through the neighborhoods where people are adding artificial turf. We converted a lot of our medians, you know, San Joaquin Hills Road, Jamboree, there's a current project right now, do another segment of Jamboree, to connect that to recycled water. So we've been making those improvements, and it makes a difference. You know, the city's water use on the whole, when you add in all of our community centers and our bathrooms and all of our parks and things like that, Stefan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's less than 5% of the whole, you know, total picture.
But in those public spaces, as well as in residential areas, I mean, we've all seen the transformation of landscaping to water drought-tolerant landscaping. I mean, I, you know, I'm just, my own anecdotal observations, there's many, many, many homes in the community. So I think our numbers must be, as you've indicated here, must be pretty good, that there is significant reduction in the use. And our population hasn't grown. So the cutback, so this is what I'm struggling with. Should we prioritize water use, or should we ask all customers? So how would we prioritize?
Well, we have to go back and try to put that together to present something, right? We look at businesses and commercial, with residential being kind of the top needs for water use. And then you figure out that, you know, landscaping is basically a second priority. That's...
So that would be guidelines, essentially?
That'd be guidelines, but we'd like to put it out there so everyone can see ahead of time what these things look like, instead of us making these decisions after, you know, lines are drawn in the sand.
Well, personally, I support that. I mean, if we look at guidelines and people make their own individual judgments. And then the other item, allocate based on budget, is that like coming from Sacramento that's telling us how much, what kind of shower we need to take? Take 30 seconds in your shower? Is that kind of thing that Sacramento's telling us?
No. So a budget would be, in today's scenario, we would give people a budget and say, hey, look, this is your calculated recommended budget. You could take it or leave it. You don't have to do anything.
Or could people, excuse my interruption, but I'm just thinking, could we give residents an option? They could go with the budget, that's a calculation based on general assumptions? Or if they would, here's what it would be for that, and then here's what it would be based on historical, and let them choose? Or is that too complicated to administer?
Sounds very complicated.
Because some people, like I said earlier, may have moved and they're in a different home, so historical is irrelevant.
You know, there could be a hybrid scenario, especially like Councilmember O'Neal was mentioning, you start out with a historical usage as we put more and more education out in terms of what your water budget is, and then transition into that in the future, or somewhere, let's say the drought gets severe and we can't meet our targets, and then, you know, you could come back to that or something like that, too. There's, there could be a transition point to get to that.
Well, if it weren't complicated, and I don't know if it is, but it just gives people a choice, because a lot of people would say, well, I wasn't living here in 2013 or 15, I was somewhere else. And so the resident... And so the resident usage on that piece of my property is not accurate to my use, but I I'm willing to go with the budget allocation to give people a choice. But if it's unreasonable, I'm not going to push it. But if we could accomplish people having a choice, then they may own the solution and the end goal better. He just shook his head, no. Not easy to do.
It's, it's just about being very, you know, straightforward upfront. These are the expectations and the code as we go into it. And but like I said, we could, if we wanted to use historical use and then as we promote more and more public information about budgets, then we could rewrite the ordinance and go towards budgets in the future too, if that's what.
Is that what you were saying too? More or less? Go with historical first? Now, I, if there, if you're saying there's a possibility to transition, once people are well informed and and dealing with the challenges of historical use and then we transition at some point in the future, if we need to, to a budget-based system, I would, I would be supportive of that. And then, yes, I would use, I guess, the standard code enforcement, but giving people a chance to be educated and informed. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I, Mark, I think these, the metering is going to be a game changer in terms of people's awareness of their use. And then we could almost double down on it by having some contests, you know, for, you know, because you could just see it so clearly, you know, someone cutting down on their use. And obviously, that's going to develop all kinds of statistical data for the entire city in different areas and households and the rest of it. So I think it's, it's going to make a big difference for for everybody because it'll be on your phone, right? You'll just be able to pull it right up. And there might be some devices that might come along that actually would be in the home and show current use, show what's being used in the house at a specific time toward leaks or excessive shower use by teenagers or or whatever. And also, obviously, the, I mean, houses with yards and water leaks are really common in these watering systems and throughout the yards. So seeing, for the individual to see that, you know, makes a difference. Watering bills aren't cheap in this city. Every month, it's a lot of money. And that's one of the problems, I think, with, you know, everyone getting bill pay and not seeing the water bill. So this helps with that, I think.
Yeah, that amount of information that's available with those digital meters and you can look at your past history and so on is is very informative. A lot of people, when we present that information to them, they're really fascinated by it.
Yeah.
The challenge is that small group, is it 1% or 10% of the people that are not engaged?
Right.
And and that's where we're going to be spending our time, no matter what scenario we choose from a code enforcement standpoint, is is those. Most people are going to be compliant, try to do their best, no matter what their scenario is, but but other people may not. And, you know, the water's just running down the street, they're doing whatever, and that's where we have to, you know, engage them.
Well, and there's going to be normals. And when you see a proud nail, you got to go and figure out what's going on there. Is it a water leak or is it just, you know, people not paying attention? But starting there for sure on the enforcement side, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Joy?
I had a question about the historical time period. Did you say, is it like just last year that we're comparing to or is it two years or? Because last year was a really cool summer, as Kevin stated. We didn't use air conditioning much at all.
So in terms of historical use, we haven't picked a number yet. And there's a couple of options, you know, even during the pandemic, when you think about it, you know, you were asked to, you know, wash your hands, you know, 10 times a day, all all these kinds of things that are in play. People were more, we used more water at home than we did in businesses in all of 2020. So we have to go back and we'll present to you what our recommendation is. It could be that we recommend a three-year average, could be that we recommend 2018 or 2019 water usage. We need to look at that.
Thank you.
All right. And we'll hear public comments on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor Avery and council members. I didn't write anything up. I wasn't prepared to speak, so bear with me. I have two thoughts and an aside. The first thought is a longer term water goal. We've talked about this off and on as a long-term thing. That's the purple pipe, where we could use recycled water for landscaping, for parks, schoolyards, medians, and eventually even residential landscaping. We keep putting that off, we don't talk about it. As we do infrastructure improvements in the streets, it wouldn't be that expensive to put in the purple pipe, even if they're not using it. We plug both ends, it's there. And then when we get to that point where we're close enough with purple pipe water, we can hook up and use it. So that might be something that we could suggest to staff, that we could use some of our surplus budget for. Second thought is with SB 9, we're going to have residential houses. I'm going to be the house in the middle, there's a house on this side and a house on this side, they both do a lot split. Now I have eight houses, eight families on each side of me. I'm going to be pretty upset with the state and anybody else who's telling me that I have to cut back my water because I now have eight people, eight families taking showers. So that's just a consideration. There is an opportunity to do, to make policy that is objective for the city, to make objective standards. We can do an interim standard while we're working through our general plan standards and maybe that's something that we can consider in our objective standards. I'm not quite sure how to word that, I'm just now formulating it in my mind, but maybe that's something that we can work on. And the aside is that the California State Building Code does require new construction and any remodel construction to conform to new water standards for landscaping as well as toilets, sinks, showerheads and all of that. So as you build, they do restrict the amount of landscaping that you can have, they restrict the amount of grass that you can put in and the types of plantings that you can use in the California State Code. So it is happening just as a matter of growth with the building department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evening, members of the council. Happy holidays. I'd like to hear from staff, if not this, tonight, at some future time before you really firm up your policies on what the future growth looks like when we look at the general plan update. We know we're going to have many more people. It's anywhere from 9,000 units to 20,000, depending on how we look at affordability. And are these cutbacks temporary, permanent? What are they? How how is this city going to face its water usage when we're facing this tremendous population increase, which will also go along with businesses, businesses all? And it was excellent presentation tonight. I just happen, in my professional sense, got a waste discharge permit for a commercial business that cleans vegetables. So I know exactly what you're talking about. The EPA is there and they have standards on exactly what they have to do to maintain health standards. So it's, it's going to be very difficult because their businesses change. They go up, they get new clients, they go down. It's not a static situation and that will certainly be the same with residential. So I'd like to hear how we're going to deal with this in the future. And I think that information should be considered by you in making your policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Couple of questions. Parts of Newport Beach are served by Irvine Ranch Water District and some parts are served by Mesa. Will the policies that you're directing staff tonight be the same for the users in those areas or we, are we at the mercy of those water districts for what they might impose on other Newport Beach residents? Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. The the area that we're talking about is strictly for our Newport Beach service area, which is approximately two-thirds of the city. You think of most of Newport Coast and some parts of the airport area up there are Irvine Ranch Water District and then some very small pockets, a couple percent here towards the west end of town are Mesa Water District. And they have their own responsibilities for their water conservation ordinances and their rate structures and how they would accomplish it as well.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment?
My name is Chuck Vancher, I live in Jasmine Creek, and I would ask Mark to straighten me out later if I misspeak. It seems, sounds to me like we have a water system and a billing system that is indiscriminate largely. You, whether you use a little bit of water or a lot of bit of water, you just pay incrementally more. And it's like a, it's just an open faucet system. This discussion tonight seems to me to reveal the prospect of having a water budget-based system where there's a dialogue and a contract between different users and Mark as the, as the provider of the water. And there's a rational system of knowing what that entity needs, be it a hospital or be it my house, and devise a budget that becomes the basis on which there's, that the contract exists rather than the open faucet approach. Seems to me that would, that would achieve a lot of positive objectives, one of which, as Councilmember Dixon and Brenner were speaking to, is that if we get into a drought situation where we've really got to button down the water supply, we then have that budget in place. And I would advocate to this council that you've got to have the tool of financial sanction. I mean, I was here, I remember the drought, the 13 drought and the measures taken by the city. And I, and I think it was effective because they got, we got to the mark that you spoke to. It takes education to make that happen. Little, few of us in this room, I bet, were aware that the governor instituted this 15% mandate in early June of this year. I wasn't aware of it. And there's been little education and only about a 3% to 5% reduction statewide. And you've got to have teeth. You have to both have a mechanism that makes sense for communication, what water you, you should need and get, and a mechanism that if you abuse the system, I don't mean that punitively, then you're going to pay more. And that becomes especially important in the drought circumstance, but less important in the non-drought times. So I think, I think it prompts thinking for how we approach this as a business. The other thing, a comment on the rebates. In our neighborhood Jasmine Creek, we've utilized that program for our large grass areas to economic benefit of our community and less water and less personnel. But as I inquired for my little, little lot, what I learned or what I was told by Jasmine Creek was we can do it in the big areas, but you can't really do it in the small lots that we have because the grass stamp is so small. The city doesn't want to deal with little things. They want bigger things to get more productivity and more results. So if we talk about telling our neighbors to look at that, just be mindful that you, you've got to have a large enough grass segment to work. Can we lower those minimum requirements, Mark? That's a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up on the purple line, water line. We did talk about this a lot five years ago. What is the status of our? I know that certainly we are blessed because of the Orange County Water District does recycle water. So what, that which we get from Orange County Water is recycled. What about our own non-potable, potable, whatever the word is, water for the landscaping? Not just for the city, but just available for, throughout the city? Where are we on that? I know we've talked about it, I don't think we've invested in the purple lines.
Sure. Councilmember Dixon, so there's a couple of aspects to it. I'll, I'll go through it here. So we have a small portfolio of recycled water in the city. It's probably about 3% of our city feeds some of our major golf courses and some of our medians. We're looking, we've looked to expand that. We have one project underway right now to add more recycled water jamboree. But it's very cost prohibitive too. Recycled water costs quite a bit as well too. And the infrastructure it takes to put these in is quite expensive. Our biggest investment has been into the recycling efforts of the Orange County Water District. You think about all the money we're paying through our rates to try to get 30% of that wastewater recycled, you know, which, and then sent back up and purified, is the primary investment that we're making. You know, neighboring agencies, they have different portfolios where they are able to build these things through property taxes and through development and things like that, makes it much easier. They also have an incentive because they generate their own wastewater that they need to recycle. We don't generate that because we ship that off to, to have it recycled by the county. And that's the balancing act. One of the things we have in queue with Public Works and we haven't gotten to it yet is to do a little mini recycled water study to see where else could we possibly add some more recycled water? And that's, that's in the queue. It's in our backlog, but that, that's still on the books to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So any other questions from council? So, Mark, do you have some, some feeling of direction?
Yes.
Do you?
Yeah.
On a couple of them? Anything fuzzy?
Yeah, no, I'm clear.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next item is discussion relative to SB 9 and SB 10.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Avery and City Councilmembers. Simone Jurges, Community Development Director. With me I have from Community Development is Jaime Maria, who's the Principal Planner, and Benjamin Zadiva, who's the Senior Planner. So tonight, we're, they're going to make a presentation on two Senate bills, Senate Bill 9 and 10. These are housing bills that the state has recently adopted. They do go into effect on January 1st. We have some policy questions that we're going to ask from the city council, just about three questions from the council members specifically on SB 9. And SB 9 is about allowing duplexes and lot splits in your single-family zone, your R1 zones. We don't feel like there's a need to change the design standards. I know some of the community members think that we need to be much more restrictive, but that's the policy question we have for the council members. We do think there's opportunity to restrict the number of units that you can put on in R1 lot. Again, that's a policy question from the city council members. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Ben and Jaime and they'll make the presentation and we can answer questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Avery and City Councilmembers. Ben Zadiva with the Planning Division. As Simone said, I have Jaime Maria to my left will be tag teaming the presentation for you. So starting off, we want to jump into SB 10. It's arguably more simple of the two. And the key takeaway is that it's completely voluntary and that's why you see that at the bottom there. But what it really allows you to do is if the city so chooses, we can adopt ordinance to allow us to rezone parcels for up to 10 residential units. And interestingly enough, if you were to adopt it by at least two-thirds or majority, supermajority vote, then it actually preempts our local initiatives such as Charter Section So as far as the considerations go, again, I said this one's pretty simple, so we're going to start with it. And as Simone said, we do have three questions. We listed them here, but we will be asking them again at the end of the presentation. Just wanted to have them there for your consideration as we move forward. So to enact SB 10's provisions, the city must adopt an ordinance by January 1st, 2029, and know that is not a typo. So you do have some time if you decide later on or if future council decides to opt in. It's key that the SB 10 ordinance would not be subject to SEQA. However, subsequent projects that come online as a result of SB 10 would potentially be subject to SEQA provisions, depending on the merits of the project. It's also notable that under SB 330 and other state law, we cannot use SB 10 to downzone properties that have a higher density. So we can't downzone a property that currently allows up to 30 units, let's say, down to 10. And no future reductions can be allowed if SB 10 is enacted via ordinance. So again, the question here, which we'll ask later, is does the council wish to opt in to SB 10 through adoption of an ordinance? Now, digressing into SB 9, Senate Bill SB 9 was signed into law by Governor Newsom on September 16th, 2021. It's effective January 1st, 2022 and applies to all R1 or equivalent lots, which includes lots that are in planned community districts such as Harborview Hills. It has two primary provisions. It allows two-unit development on one lot and also allows It allows two-unit development on one lot and also allows a subdivision of one lot into two lots. What this means is that you can combine both those provisions to ultimately get four to eight units on a lot where only one was previously allowed by the zoning and land use regulations. Jaime is going to dive into that a little bit further on in the presentation. As far as exclusions go, there are some exclusions that we can apply. The one I really want to focus on, there's a lot of attention on very high fire hazard zones and special flood hazard areas. A lot of people read that and think that a lot of the city is excluded, when in fact the city has adopted mitigation measures that allow single-family and residential and other construction in those areas. And therefore, because of that, those special exclusions do not apply. In essence, you can build a single-family there today, so you can build projects under SB nine in the same locations. Another one I want to highlight is the protected housing units. Rental housing, the bill defines as occupied by a tenant within the last three years. And obviously affordable is exactly what it looks like. And rent controlled goes with the affordable as another protected housing unit type. So it's important to note that the SB nine provisions are not, they do not supersede the Coastal Act and its intent. So purpose and intent of the Coastal Act, of course, is public access and enhancement of access throughout the coastal zone. So there are some provisions that can be carried out still under SB nine. And as you can see, there is no requirement for a public hearing on a coastal development permit, although a coastal development permit would still be required in the coastal zone. As far as development standards go, I know Ms. Scarborough touched on this in her last comment on the previous item, but the city can only adopt objective design and development standards. I know you all have a good idea of what objective means, but it's really just exercising no judgment when looking at something. It's a numeric setback. It's a numeric height. It's something that's very cut and dry. And it's important to note that the city does have very strong existing objective design standards that would apply to SB nine projects. And with that, I'm going to let Jaime take over and dive into that portion.
Thank you, Ben. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. So as Ben's mentioning, the city currently does have strong objective standards in place. So our existing zoning standards are essentially objective design and development standards. So every property that's residential zone has a number of standards that apply to it. So we have setbacks that apply to building placement, to control bulk and mass. We have either floor area limits or lot coverage limitations. Recently, as council knows, we revised our third floor standards to further regulate third-story bulk and mass. We have height limits that regulate how tall a structure can be to provide articulation. We have open volume standards. And for parking and access, we have vehicular access standards. And so when you put those all together, you essentially create a building envelope that applies to each property. And so that's what the exhibit on the bottom of that slide shows is, you know, theoretical building envelope that would normally apply to, let's say, a single-family home. And so come January 1st, even if we don't have an ordinance in place, this building envelope would still apply to a particular property except where SB nine would preclude certain standards. And so those mandatory standards where SB nine would override local ordinances is shown on the slide. So setbacks, the city cannot require a setback greater than four feet for a side or rear setback area. And the application of any development standard cannot preclude the development of at least two 800-square-foot units. So if the combination of development standards prevented the construction of two 800-square-foot units, we would have to provide some sort of accommodation or deviation to at least accommodate those 800 square foot units. In terms of parking, where we normally require two parking spaces per unit for residential, SB nine would require, we only require no more than one parking space. And there are certain areas where parking would be fully exempt, and that's in transit-rich areas, so a major transit stop or along half a mile within a high-quality transit corridor. And then in addition, state law would actually require that short-term rentals be prohibited. And so going back to that theoretical building envelope, you can see on the bottom, again, this envelope would still apply except as those mandatory standards would provide a deviation. So instead of a one unit being, having to fit within that building envelope, we would now have to accommodate at least two units. And then that red kind of expanded areas kind of represents the expansion in the setback area. So overall, in most of the communities, it would be a negligible or a small expansion in their overall building envelope. When we took a look at Newport Heights and Balboa Peninsula and Corona del Mar, those are areas that have the more traditional zoning, where setbacks actually play a part into the formula for determining the overall maximum floor area that a structure can have. And so those areas, because of the change in setbacks, we do anticipate a small increase in the overall building envelope. You can see on that, on the table on the right-hand side of the column, you'll see a range in typical lot sizes in those areas, from about 84 square feet to about 36 square feet. Other communities such as Camia Shores and Dover Shores, those don't use a floor area limit, but rather they're restricted using maximum lot coverage. And that coverage won't change. And so the maximum floor area wouldn't change necessarily, just their setbacks. And in Santa Ana Heights, it's a little interesting, our standards really are based on height and setbacks. There's not a lot coverage or floor area limit, but they do have the largest rear setbacks in the city. Typically, a single-family home in Santa Ana Heights would have a 25-foot rear setback. But with SB nine, that would be reduced to as close as four feet. And so we anticipate in Santa Ana Heights with the larger lots, there could be much more opportunities for change there. Now, with the adoption of an ordinance, the city can adopt, again, as Ben mentioned, objective design standards or development standards. And so examples of what the city can do is restrict maximum unit size. So again, SB nine says we can't preclude the development of at least two 800-square-foot units, but that does leave the door open to restricting the maximum unit size to 800 square feet. So that'd be a really restrictive unit size that could constrain development. You can restrict the maximum height of developments utilizing this SB nine process. We can establish privacy measures to minimize window openings or balconies or roof decks kind of facing an adjacent neighbor or requiring upper-level step backs to provide a better transition from existing neighbors. We do believe that within the coastal zone, since the Coastal Act does apply, and we do have a duty to protect public access, and providing adequate onsite parking is one measure to provide increased public access within the street, that we can possibly require increased parking within the coastal zone. And this is similar to what we did with our accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And we can establish, you know, a host of other architectural design and material standards. We can require that the two units match in terms of materials, roof, design, color, to kind of minimize appearance of multiple units on the lot. And so the second question that I will be asking the council at the end of our presentation is, does the council want to adopt more restrictive standards to limit the usability of SB nine projects? Or utilize the existing building envelopes that are within our existing zoning code? And then to switch gears to the second component of SB nine, and this is the, what's been termed urban lot split. Within SB nine, so in addition to allowing two units on a lot, the city also has to allow for the ministerial subdivision of any single-family law. And so ministerial means without a public hearing, we would have to approve a parcel map administratively. There's a couple of caveats within the, the law. So the subdivision cannot result in a lot that's less than 1,200 square feet. So here's a theoretical lot split. We have one lot 1,200 square feet, the other would be 1,800 square feet. And there is a requirement that either lot can't be less than 40% of the original lot size. State law does say that we can require that the property owner sign an affidavit indicating that they intend to live in one of the lots created from the lot split, but we can't require any additional owner occupancy requirements. So it's not clear how we can actually enforce that requirement besides requiring something stating that's their intention to live there. And then another important thing to note is that the city can require or limit that when someone uses this urban lot split process, that we can restrict the number of units to no more than two per unit. But we do believe we need to adopt an ordinance to implement that, and I'll explain that in a later slide. Some additional limitations that apply to the urban lot split is we can prohibit a property owner taking advantage of an urban lot split from using urban lot split on an adjacent property or working in concert with another party to split an adjacent property. And so I think the intention there is to prevent a developer from creating a number of subdivisions within a certain block. You also can't double down on the lot split. So there's a, you can, once someone subdivides a property using an urban lot split, you can't then go back and further subdivide one of those lots into much smaller lots. Something that's a little troubling for the city is we cannot require the dedication of any right-of-way or off-site improvements. And so typically, when we do permit a subdivision of property, we do require, you know, that they install sidewalks or repair sidewalks or do alley improvements. That would all be precluded under this urban lot split scenario. So I just want to share a couple of examples of how the SB nine works using the two development on the lot, and then how an urban lot split can work into it and then ADUs. So this first example is a, a simple example where you have a single-family home. The property owner intends to retain their existing home. They can add a new unit on that same property. Under state law, for accessory dwelling units in our city ordinance, it is possible to add two detached ADUs on a property with a duplex. So theoretically, we can get a maximum of four units in this scenario without a lot In this scenario, this is, I'm going to introduce a lot split scenario. So in this case, we have an existing property owner. He wants to retain their existing home. They propose a lot split, and they add an ADU within their own home. So that gets them two units on that first lot. And then they build duplex on, on the back half. So that gets you a total of four units within these two lots. This example is kind of the worst case. So you have an existing single-family home. They demo the structure and subdivide the lot into two. They then fully maximize building, total two primary units on each lot for a total of four units. And utilizing the accessory dwelling unit law in our ordinance, theoretically, it could build two detached ADUs per lot, and that gets you to a total of eight units on these two lots. But I, as I did mention, state law does allow for the city to restrict a maximum of two units, including ADUs, if someone takes advantage of a lot split, but we would have to incorporate that into our ordinance. And so the questions, third question for council at the end of the presentation is, do we want to take that approach? And I'm going to pass this back to Ben.
Thanks, Jaime. So as far as implications for the city, I put the first point there. It's unclear how many homeowners will take advantage of SB nine. I know there is some discussion that potentially developers could be leveraging SB nine to profit, but there are some studies like the Turner Center out of UC Berkeley that indicates that most likely this is geared towards homeowners, because there is the ownership affidavit, which is the intent of living on one of the properties that's subdivided for at least three years. Unless the developer wants to live on that property, it's not likely that they could do that. I'm sure they could find a loophole, but again, that's why homeowners is bolded there for you. Diving into data for Newport Beach, we have approximately 17,000 single-family lots that are now eligible for two units, and that's just the basic, again, density increase through SB nine. Approximately, I have to correct, the number is actually 16,500 that are eligible for urban lot split, with the remaining 500, approximately 500 being too small. They, they are too small, so they're ineligible for that provision. It's also important to note that nearly half of all of these single-family properties have an active HOA. And as currently written, SB nine does not preclude HOAs from prohibiting SB nine projects. So I think that's an interesting note. There may also be other factors in our particular circumstances, such as rental exclusions, which according to the Housing Element data, nearly 20% of single-family homes are rented. So that would kick those out of SB nine eligibility. Also, again, homeowner desires. Does someone really want to cut their lot and lose their backyard? Maybe not. And then ordinance restrictions, which is, again, looking to council for direction on how restrictive to actually make an ordinance for SB nine implementation. Talking a little bit about what other cities are doing, this is just high general level at this point, but some cities are currently preparing more restrictive and some very restrictive ordinances that would apply specific objective design standards. As Jaime mentioned, we can apply sizes of units, limit them to 800 square feet each. We can apply one-story, single-story height limitations. We can apply architectural requirements for articulation and materials to match the current development on the site. We can also apply affordability requirements. It looks like some cities are requiring covenants of affordability on at least one unit on an SB nine project. As Jaime mentioned, we can also require additional parking in the coastal zone to uphold the Coastal Act, and then also privacy measures, as I already mentioned. So as, as a case study, we're going to look at the city of Buena Park. This is the only case study we're going to provide. So they are looking to enact affordability requirements. They're limiting the maximum size of each unit to 800 square feet. Their height limits actually vary by lot size. I believe it's over 2,000 square feet, an over 2,000-square-foot lot can have up to two stories, and anything less than that just gets one story. And again, they have a host of objective design standards that are very specific. I believe in addition to Cal Green building requirements, which are above and beyond what the base requirement would be. So again, kind of pulling it all together, we have three questions for you. One regarding SB 10, and that's really, do you want to opt in? SB nine, does the council want to use more restrictive standards through an ordinance to regulate SB nine projects or just use our current code? And then lastly, and maybe more importantly, does council want to limit maximum number of units to two per lot? As Jaime showed you, an extreme case where someone may be able to fit two units and two detached ADUs, you'd end up with eight units on a lot, which the council may want to restrict. So those are really the three questions. We're looking for council direction. As far as the next step goes, we would be doing a resolution to initiate the amendments to the general plan, coastal land use plan, and municipal code potentially. And that's all on tonight's consent calendar. It's item number nine. And then we would be looking to draft that ordinance, again, based on your recommendations for policy direction for your review, looking at maybe mid-2022 at this time. So that concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions you may have. And I'm going to go back to the questions so you can see what we're looking for direction from you all on. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner.
Yes, on your diagrams, the three examples that you showed us, it shows, that's not the one. Okay, it says duplex and ADU. And this one says lot split duplex and ADUs. Are these all single-family lots that you're talking about to start with? For instance, when I see duplex, I think of an R2 lot.
That's correct. So the example where, was all starting, this only applies to single-family zone lots. And so with SB nine, you can now have two units on a lot. We use the term duplex loosely, but they could be two attached units or two detached units.
So what if you've got the condos in Corona del Mar where the lot has been split, and now they're individual condos? Are those considered single-family?
No. So in Corona del Mar, where we have duplexes that have been approved through a parcel map to allow for the condo convert, I guess the condominiums, we don't actually split the lot on those properties. We permit the division of airspace, so it's still two units on one lot. And on those properties, they're already zoned R2, and so they're, they wouldn't be eligible for SB nine.
Mr. Blom.
Thank you, Mayor. So parking is my first question on this. So as we're looking at, all right, let's start with this one. So two new units plus an ADU. We've said we've exempted parking for the ADU. We still have the existing unit parking necessity. When we talk about the two new units, and it doesn't look like there's a direct access parking, does that mean that we're now looking at something that's coming off the sidewalk? Or are we just, is there no parking required for that? I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, how do we get parking into this? Or?
Yeah, that's a good question, Councilmember Blom. So we can require access. That's still an objective development standard. So, and that's something we've been thinking about as staff, is a lot of our communities take access from the alley. We actually have standards in place today that say if you're We actually have standards in place today that say if you're butting an alley, you have to take access from an alley. There's very few exceptions, maybe a corner lot, that we would allow for side access. Within the coastal zone, we do have requirements that state that we won't allow for access that's not off an alley but off a street, if it would displace the opportunity for public parking. So those standards would still apply, and as we develop an ordinance, I think we would want to strengthen those same standards.
Wonderful. And then HOAs, I think that was probably the most enlightening part of this entire conversation, and I can't imagine that the entire city of Newport Beach might become an HOA in the next couple of months. But, so HOAs are exempt because of their own local standards or their own independent standards? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But the city can't implement those same standards that an HOA can? Or are they all design-based standards? I'm just trying to wrap my head around how, how the HOA is able to circumnavigate SB 9, not to say that we would like the city to maintain that same type of policy, but in, in the end of the day, you know, if this is part of the subdivision of the city that all of a sudden now the residents get more control over their own neighborhood, I just feel like this is the most, the most gold pot at the end of the rainbow thing I've heard about this entire measure. So when it comes to the HOAs, is it their design standards that are inhibiting, inhibiting the ability to enact SB 9? Is that pretty much what we're looking at?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, the existing CCNRs, whatever the HOA has in place, if they prevent the, you know, an additional unit on that property, that would apply. I do have to warn the council that this was the same issue when accessory dwelling units were first enacted by the state. The first go-round, HOAs still had the ability to preclude them. The state came back two years later and removed that ability.
And then you had mentioned privacy measures, and I have to feign complete ignorance here, but what are, what are privacy measures? I have no idea.
A very good question, and sorry for the, we agree with that term. So some cities are enacting window limitations on second stories, number of windows you can have, maybe how they're facing, also balconies and open area that is on the second level that would potentially look over a fence, let's say. So there are objective design standards that could apply that would help maintain privacy for residents.
Wonderful. Thank you guys very much. Amazing presentation.
Mr. O'Neil.
Sorry, Mr. Moulden.
I'm going to take a stab at this HOA one. CCNRs are protected under the contract clause, which is reflected in the U.S. Constitution. The state constitution essentially can't pass a law that nullifies a contract between private entities. They're probably also grandfathered in, so thank goodness for HOAs. Never thought I'd say that as a conservative. No, yes, yes. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
Ditto.
Mr. Duffield.
I'm not so sure this is that important to even bring up at this point, but at some point, I would assume if, and I don't think there'll be a mad rush to build all this at the same time, but wouldn't our infrastructure be overwhelmed, sewer, water, power? Eventually, if this happens, we'd have to tear up all the streets and put in all-new everything? Now, I know that's extreme, but that is prob, if it were to catch on, wouldn't you think that would be required to upgrade all our systems? Do they care? I guess they don't care. Okay. Never mind. I get you, and it's not going to happen overnight, but obviously is something that would happen, and I'm a no, yes, no guy. Thanks.
Ms. Dixon.
No, yes, no, or no, yes, yes?
Oh. Well, no. I was hoping.
I was hoping to put on the question three, just require two per lot, and then I would say yes.
That's a yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's minimum.
I thought.
But one, only one.
Only one per lot. You're right, you're right.
So that's no, yes?
That's two, yeah. Thank you, sorry.
Well, I support that, but I just want to ask some clarifying questions. I thought when you and I talked, Mr. Juergens, that the recent third-floor massing ordinance that we passed helped, and I believe it does, I guess it helps limit a lot of this over, or the intense densification of our city. Is that true? But there's still some workarounds there, I guess, or mandates.
Well, again, the policy question for the council is that, do you want to maintain the existing envelope? And so we did work on the third-story massing, we controlled the massing, and now we have this, this box that we've created.
Yes.
So if you want to allow a duplex in that box, then you don't have to make any further changes. But what I'm hearing from the council majority is that we don't want to allow these duplexes on the R1 lots. Hence, what I'm hearing from the council is that you want to be more restrictive and restrictive and try to limit the amount of duplexes that are built out.
And we can do that.
Yes.
Just also to clarify, I was concerned, I guess, intrigued or concerned. So in Newport Heights, well, we, first of all, back up, we have a five-foot rear setback requirement, a 20-foot rear setback requirement. So those setback requirements are now subject to SB 9.
That's correct.
But we lose that, we lose that.
We do, and it, and it doesn't affect us in a majority of our areas of town. It does affect us dramatically in Santa Ana Heights. That's kind of the biggest area. And what's our setback in CDM and on the peninsula to Jaime?
Typically, adjacent to an alley, we have a five-foot alley setback, and that's something we're looking into, is whether or not that we can maintain a five-foot alley setback and then distinguish that different from a typical 10-foot rear setback. But I just want to clarify as, as well, if someone's not taking advantage of SB 9 and they're only building a single-family without doing an urban lot split and not adding a second unit, our existing standards apply, and they would remain. So whatever existing rear setback we have would stay in place.
I see. And then you made a comment about the city cannot require sidewalk repair during construction, sidewalk repair or alley.
Only, only under SB 9. So if somebody wants to take advantage of SB 9, and the council now is a majority, it sounds like, you want to really restrict SB 9. So with those restrictions, it'll be very limited for anybody to go and take advantage of SB 9. But if somebody actually did, we couldn't require that dedication or, or utility upgrade or the repairing of the sidewalk.
Do we do that a lot?
Yes, we do. We do require that they, because when the trucks come, they damage the sidewalks, and so they're required to repair those sidewalks. SB 9 says we can't even do that.
At some point, when we get through this, and when you come back, I'd like to know what the cost would be that's non-recoverable to the city. Okay, thank you. No, I am, no, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a, I'm going with the flow. Just on the face of it, I'm just thinking about residents, how, how our residents would feel, you know, the, the R1s, it's, for so many families, it's about the backyard. And so to have a duplex go up a couple of stories next door, or maybe on each side, eventually, it really changes that whole dynamic, you know, in terms of just privacy, you know, you, you're just going to be feeling it, and light, all of it, it's just really detrimental to, to the current setup with R1, for sure, especially, I've been to some of my friends' houses, they have some spectacular backyards that they spend a lot of time in, which mine is not, but I like to go visit. I keyed on something, the state could obviously come back at some point and decide to sort of tidy this up from their perspective and make it so we didn't have this flexibility that we're going through right now.
Sure, and as Jaime mentioned, you can kind of look at the ADU ordinance, and it's evolving, you know, changes over time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Am I wrong to be slightly encouraged by this? I, I mean, it's, it sounds a little better than the ominous predictions that we had heard before. So there are certain controls that we can enact for now, but we would still be better off with that state charter amendment that said we restored local control. That would still make our job easier and, and more responsible, correct?
Yeah, so you're talking about the initiative to amend the Constitution of California, yes.
Okay. And as far as not splitting the lots in Corona del Mar, the ADU thing still applies, though. So you still could have four living units on one of those small duplex lots, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the, the limitation where we can restrict no more than two units on each lot only comes into play when someone's taking advantage of both components, so they're doing two units and doing an urban lot split. But if they're not doing an urban lot split, then they can do two units and then whatever configuration of ADUs is allowed under our ordinance and state law.
And that's still problematic because no parking is required for the ADUs. Is that correct?
In a lot of cases. In some cases, if they're not near a bus stop, then we can still require one space. But I think in most cases, there's bus stops throughout the city, and so in a lot of cases, we're precluded from requiring parking for an ADU.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Dixon.
Yes, thank you. One final question, somewhere in your presentation in terms of the schedule going forward. So when would you be coming back with the proposed ordinance, ordinance changes, modifications?
Staff doesn't have an identified target at this point in time. We're just saying early to mid-2022. Obviously, we'll take it to Planning Commission for review and then back to council.
Do we have a need for a sense of urgency, given it would be kind of the Wild West until we have an ordinance in place?
I think, Councilmember Juergens, I'm going to take that question. There is that question of an urgency ordinance. I, I think that we can accelerate the schedule if the council's comfortable. We'll come back much quicker without doing an urgency ordinance. I know this is a priority for the council and for the community. I, I hear that very clearly. We're going to accelerate the schedule and come back sooner.
All right, thank you.
Don't, don't we have to do this before January 1st, when SB 9 takes effect?
No, as from the objective design standards, we don't have to do that, but from an urgency ordinance, we would.
We can enact objective design standards after SB 9 passes.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's confusing, because I think on the Livable California meetings, they have indicated that these things needed to be done before January 1st, so I just don't want us to miss out on.
No, neither do we. We, we will go back and verify this.
Just to make, just to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
All right. So any public comment?
Good afternoon, Nancy Scarborough again. Thank you so much for this presentation. This is very good. We've been talking about this for a long time, and I think this is good information and in a really easy-to-digest formula. I was going to suggest that we jump onto an immediate interim objective standards, but it sounds like we're going to move forward in that direction anyway. And I think, I understand from the Livable Design, Livable California website, that you can enact them after that. It's just what happens before that. You can't go back and, and if somebody files plans for a permit on January 1st, and there's no objective standard, at that point, they can do whatever they want. So until we have this in place, we're at risk of those things. I don't see this being a rush on the city for a lot of things. I will tell you that we get a letter every single week from a broker or a development company wanting to buy our house for cash in less than 30 days. That's not a homeowner selling another home and moving up. That's a company that is looking for homes actively in Newport Heights. And I have done the math on our lot in Newport Heights, and we could split it and put two duplexes and four ADUs on our lot. It would fit. There wouldn't be very much parking. There isn't now. That's partly our fault, but, but it is very, it's common in our neighborhood that that, that could happen. So I appreciate your efforts toward moving that forward quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. It does not appear that there's a whole lot of people wanting to speak to you tonight, but regarding the format of the study sessions, I would just point out, to be respectful to the public, it would be good to hear the public comment before you give direction to the staff. The main comment I wanted to make is that, as I understand it, SB 9 is a statewide legislation, and only a small part of California is in the coastal zone, much of Newport Beach is. And I'm wondering if we truly understand how this applies to the coastal zone, because it says within it that it's not intending in any way to supersede or change the regulations in the coastal zone. We heard that the lot split and anywhere the lot split, and in many cases, the construction would need a coastal development permit. The standards for a coastal development permit, some of those are subjective, fitting into community character and so forth. And whether or not a hearing is held, it seems to be ambiguous as to whether it can be held or is prohibited being held. But once the city takes action on a coastal development permit, if it's what, in what's called the appeal area, the fact that we have issued a coastal development permit has to be noticed to the Coastal Commission, and it goes on their website as something that people can appeal, and the hearing there would not clearly be ministerial. Some of these lot, and I don't know if you're aware of this or not, in our coastal land use plan, in our single-family residential areas and all others, coastal land use plan has tiers of development density, number of units per acre, and many of these lot splits would violate that. Our implementation plan also has setback requirements in it, and it's unclear how this could impose those. If it's not overriding the Coastal Act, which says we have to comply with our coastal plan, I don't know how that works. So I'm wondering if we understand how it applies in the coastal zone part of our city. And then second, about the HOAs of, first, I thought there was something in the law that exempted HOAs, but now I hear it's about CCNRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions. And I would just point out that many tracts that were subdivided many years ago have CCNRs. Where I live, when it was subdivided, the, the, there are CCNR restrictions limiting the development there to a single-family home per lot. And yet, that is not part of an HOA. We have an HOA just for a pool area, but I suspect there are many other properties in Newport Beach that have CCNRs but do not have an HOA. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, David Tanner. I would like to echo a lot of what Mr. Mosher said. I think we've heard tonight that, that implementation of SB 9 is going to result in more on-street parking. We're going to see it. Neighborhood where I live, Mayor Avery, your district, Newport Shores, it's very difficult to find street parking there. Middle of the day, okay, in the weekends, forget it. We have more cars there. That's going to mean less coastal access, less parking for residents that do not live in the city, that want to come visit the coast. That's in direct contradiction to the local coastal plan. We have simple things, like our Public Works Department is going to have to figure out, how are we going to do street sweeping? There isn't physically going to be enough parking to leave one side of the street vacant for half a day on Monday, and the other side of the street vacant on Tuesday. So there are practical problems. And I would like to see, particularly within the coastal zone, that the Coastal Commission weigh in and provide the city council guidance. There's AB 2797 that I don't think I've ever heard staff mention to you. This is a, a assembly bill that was passed as a result of a court case where the legislature was asked to determine which had priority, a local coastal program or affordable housing legislation, both state-level documents or approvals. And the SB, or AB 2797 said they have to be harmonious. Well, is it your job to determine what is harmonious when this SB 9, or when it is implemented, is going to result in a loss of public parking? is going to result in a loss of public parking to access coastal resources? I would like to see the city council do what it feels that it needs to do now, but seek input on these statewide coastal issues from the Coastal Commission and get guidance from them to help you clarify some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Buck Fancher, Jasmine Creep. I'm only here more frequently because I'm on the Water Committee, and it's necessary that I get here for education purposes, so now I'm here more. As the slides were presented, it seemed to me I was seeing the history of the Village Streets and the Flower Streets evolving in front of my eyes. Bungalows to two units are more on the same piece of ground. And it interests me that we've got the opportunity, if we have to live with this bill, to try to create a urban form and a housing form that works out in implementation and reality, where we're not creating secondary units that affect the primary units that go down in value if we're creating less-than-optimal housing. And we need to be careful that we don't think, put on our restrictive cap and end up with something that's going to be bad 20 years from now, but that we put on a cap that says, let's have, let's create housing that has its greatest value to house our residents. Couple of things in that thought that jump out, and I think parking, as mentioned earlier, is a key. I did not see in the presentation provision for garage space in that second house on the back of the lot. Would that not be part of the requirement? I didn't see it carved out like in the ADU is carved out, but will you, just like in the Village, are you going to require a garage in the back? Because we can't, we've got to house our vehicles. It's going to be many years before we get rid of the car in a city. We will at some time, but we've got to provide for it now. So I think you do need to make parking be part of it. And I'm not familiar with the third floor or the way we deal with roofs in our ordinances. But if you have a two-story house next to a mandated, it can only be one-story house, either on the lot or next door, and rooftops where we have scarcity of land, they become outdoor living rooms, and we see that in our city all over. And it's really a positive thing. You need to be careful that you don't have a one-story with an outdoor living room that is next to a two-story. That's the same as having two stories in terms of privacy and the like. So I'd urge you to think through these items.
Thank you. Any further public comment on this item? All right. We're going to move to number five, and that's Parking Code Update.
And just real quickly for Brown Act purposes, it sounds like everybody was no, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Avery and councilmembers. Simone Jurges is Community Development Director. So today, we're going to talk about parking, commercial parking. With me, I have Principal Planner Matt Snyder. We were with you back in January talking about, you know, what are we going to do with our parking standards? And Matt's been leading the charge on a study, and we have some results. One key component here is that we've broken up our parking study into two phases. The first phase, we're just talking about the first phase today, and these are kind of our low-hanging fruit. We want to get your direction, get direction from you. If you're okay with these, we'll go ahead and implement and get a code change. And then we're still working on Phase Two. But I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Mr. Snyder, and he'll go ahead and do the presentation.
Thank you, Simone. Good evening, Mayor Avery, councilmembers. As Simone indicated, we initially presented this this past January, and one of the outcomes of that study session was direction to study several items related to commercial parking. One was looking at restaurant parking ratios. The second, related to researching incentives for ride-share and bicycle use facilities, or bicycle facilities, I should say. And the third is an overall look at our existing commercial parking ratios. To assist with this effort, we retained the consulting firm Nelson Nygaard. They've completed a comparative analysis with national standards as well as comparable peer cities. Examples of those cities include Laguna Beach, Encinitas, San Clemente. In terms of national standards, the Institute of Transportation Engineers and the Urban Land Institute. Ezra Pincus Roth, Senior Associate with Nelson Nygaard, is part of the project team that assisted us, and he's here this evening to answer any questions. We'll dive into the first topic, restaurant parking. I think it's important first to understand how we currently regulate restaurant parking. And so what you have here is an illustration of a floor plan for a typical restaurant. In Newport Beach, we utilize what's called net public area when calculating restaurant parking, and that would be reflected at the area that I just shaded out. And essentially, this is the service area of the restaurant where the customers interact. It excludes the kitchen, restroom, office, those types of areas. And this is somewhat unique. And so what our study revealed is, you know, when you look at Newport and compare it to national standards and our peer cities, our parking ratio for restaurants is actually higher than most other local cities and the national standards. And so what our recommendation would be is, one, is to shift away from the net public area that's really unique to Newport and shift to a gross floor area or the overall square footage of the building and establish a fixed parking ratio. And so what we're recommending is one space per 100 square foot gross floor area compared to the current one space per 30 to 50 square foot net public area. Bicycle use was another area of study we were tasked to look into. Bicycle use is very common in coastal cities such as Newport. Interestingly, our existing parking regulations really don't take those into account, and we really don't have an incentive for people to install bicycle facilities. With the help of our consultant, we looked at a number of other jurisdictions, and there are codified reductions in other cities that are providing bicycle facilities. And so we formulated a recommendation that would be one parking space reduction for every three bicycle spaces provided, up to a maximum of 5%. And it's important to point out, when we looked at other cities and codes, there were definitely some that were more progressive, but we want to be mindful that we're not going to create any spillover parking impacts. And so we've tried to take a middle-of-the-road approach. Ride-share and delivery services is another area we were tasked to look at. Again, everyone knows of the increasing popularity of both of these, particularly with the onset of COVID. It's definitely impacting how people are accessing our commercial businesses and the parking demands. And so again, we looked at other jurisdictions and formulated a recommendation for an incentive that would be a 10% reduction for providing a parking space that's dedicated to ride-share delivery vehicles. Overall, the city has numerous, obviously, commercial parking standards for various commercial land uses. We asked Nelson Nygaard to take a look at all of our existing parking ratios, identify ones that aren't in line with current standards, and then formulate recommendations. Many of our current standards are in line with best practices, so that's good news. But there were some that were out of line and that we're proposing updates. As an example, medical and dental parking rates, we're recommending one space per 250 square feet, where the current rate is one per 200. In terms of retail, we're recommending one space per 400. The current rate is one per 250. And again, these updates are to reflect the current practices we're seeing in other jurisdictions that have national standards. Parking in Lufy, so essentially, a parking in Lufy program. It allows for the required number of parking spaces to be reduced by, as it suggests, paying an in-lufy, and that fee is collected for the development of public parking. The city actually initiated an in-lufy program in the 1970s, but it's been suspended for a period of time, extended period of time, actually. So the fees have not been updated. No new use permits have been issued to initiate new in-lufies. But it is a tool that's available. We want to make the council aware of that. We have not studied it, but if it's something the council's interested in us pursuing, we certainly could include it in the second phase of the parking study. And parking space reductions. So the zoning code currently allows for parking waivers of required parking spaces through the approval of a conditional use permit, and those go to our Planning Commission. And it's required to be supported by a parking study, a parking management plan. And what we've seen recently with the City of Orange, who has a similar zoning scenario, they recently adopted a provision in their code that would allow minor waivers to be processed administratively. And so our recommendation or suggestion is that's something we might want to consider here in Newport Beach. It obviously will provide a more streamlined approach to handling some of the more minor waivers. And it would be to incorporate up to a 20% parking waiver by the director, and that would obviously be based on a parking study and parking management plan, and those would obviously be vetted through our traffic engineering team. Part of the impetus of the parking conversation this past January was outdoor dining. Obviously, we saw an expansion of outdoor dining during COVID, and it created different parking implications. We have modeled out all the parking update ratios that we've looked at, as well as the incentives with the ride-share and the bicycle parking. And for the vast majority of existing restaurants, they would be able to install some level of outdoor dining or expand their outdoor dining with these updates. It might require a combination of the different tools, but most cases that we modeled out, it would be allowed. There were some areas where the parking was just already too constrained, and so this won't make a difference, obviously, in that scenario, or the level of expansion or amount of area that would be allowed would be somewhat limited. And this is basically just a summary of the areas I just ran through, sort of to tease out some feedback. I can leave this up. This basically concludes my presentation. I'm happy to get feedback. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, Nelson Nygaard is here as well.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
So I had a handful. So first off, it strikes me that if we update citywide, it's going to be a rather different calculation for a whole bunch of different areas of our city. The peninsula would be remarkably different than Newport Coast, for example. It doesn't, I can't really see a situation where we put a bunch of bike racks in Newport Coast and suddenly people are biking there, for example. So I kind of want to point out the location-specific side of all of this. And I know we have the opportunity to do things like, you know, parking management districts and whatnot, which probably makes a lot of sense in some of these areas. But I, you know, I just want to point out, a lot of the impetus for this was in the more, in the areas where we had a lot of the outdoor dining, a lot of the outdoor dining was taking place. Excuse me. I would say peninsula area and, you know, part of Coronetamar and things like that. So it was, I suspect a lot of the, a lot of the impetus for this was in areas where we're trying to figure out what the right approach is, especially when it comes to things like bikes, when it comes to ride-shares. And, you know, especially as we're seeing the increase number of Uber Eats and things like that, we're starting to see dedicated spots for those all around town, especially in Irvine Company parking lots. So that's, it's really more of the how, how commercial areas are evolving and how we can approach that from a parking management side of things. So the site-specific is something that we're definitely going to need to make sure we're wrapping our heads around as we modify some of these. And so on the, on the restaurant parking in particular, so the one per 100, I understand is kind of, that's the, that's the standard used regularly. One of the things that I've been talking to other, other city officials in other areas has been the approach that some of them are taking to differentiate, differentiate between larger restaurants and smaller restaurants. The smaller restaurants being more of the fast casual, where they have a high turnover, and so you don't have the same number of people parking for an extended period of time, which is what the one per 100 gets kind of modeled off of. Versus, you know, if I, if I'm going to, if I'm going to Javier's, I'm probably going to stay there for a while. If I'm going to Taco Bell, I'm probably not, right? It's sort of that approach. And so if, if you have a smaller restaurant, a smaller space, you won't need as many spaces, certainly just because you have smaller space anyway, but you're also going to see a much higher turnover. And so to that point, it strikes me that you don't need to do like a one per 100 across the board. You could do one per 200 or one per 250 for the small, fast casual restaurants. So I think we ought to be taking that into account when we're trying to differentiate the difference between a small, smaller, fast casual than a, than a larger sit-down, long, long-stay kind of restaurant. On the bikes and ride-share, totally makes sense to me. Again, I think it's a little bit, this is one where we ought to be a little judicious in it in terms of the site-specific areas. The, let's see. On the parking waiver, the study, so one of the things on the study side of things, you know, it depends on what the size and scope is of the studies that we're going to require, and that's why I was kind of curious. If we're looking at reducing by 20%, which is a pretty significant amount, what is, what would be the parking study's size and scope? I mean, it always comes down to the number of, you know, how many times someone is out there observing and how many days they're out there looking and what time of day they're looking and what time of year they're looking at it. So what's the, what's the size and scope of an approved parking study for a reduction of this size?
It would be the same as the current practice. So, I mean, we would expect a professionally-prepared traffic study by traffic professionals. It would be vetted by our own traffic professionals to make sure, obviously, it's technically sufficient. Our code currently does allow us to accept less than that standard, and it's somewhat unique, but sometimes there's so, there's circumstances that are so intuitive that you don't really need a full-blown study to calculate, and that's really done on a limited basis. But the norm would be a full study.
Okay. All right. Okay. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Some overall questions. So back, you could leave that slide there. I'll come to that in a moment. But back to your original first slide, when you talked about these national standards, could you just speak more about what are the national standards? More people are riding bikes, for example, or using Uber and Lyft. Is this the primary driver of the, of the over-intensification of parking requirements that is driving this? And that, do you see those same trends? I think Chandler, Arizona, or Orange, California, they're not necessarily destination cities, so their parking scarcity is not the same or equivalent to ours. So if you could elucidate on what were the driving context issues of why you're recommending, making these recommendations?
Yeah, sure. So I should point out, in particular with, with ride-share, I mean, that's, that's very much a paradigm shift, right? It's emerging. And so there is a limited pool of other jurisdictions to look into. And so again, we tried to take a more conservative approach. There's actually examples that were far more progressive. But we also modeled these out, and so we, we have parking studies for, for recent commercial developments, and so we know what the parking demand is and the parking supply, and we applied the recommended ratio updates as well as the incentives with the reductions. And they still provided surplus parking. So we obviously want to ground-truth this and make sure that when we bring something forward, that it's not going to create some sort of off-site parking impact. But it is fair to say, and it's a good point that you raised, that like, in particular with ride-share, it's emerging, and so the example of cities aren't as comparable to coastal cities we would like, but that there are best that are available. The bike is more widespread, and I think we're much more comfortable with those recommendations.
So back to your recommendations. Overall, I support them. I, how old are these parking requirements? So it's been probably decades since we've looked, the city's looked at.
You know, the zoning ordinance is so fluid, and parking rates get updated at various points, but, but some are very old and haven't been updated, I would say, in decades. Others may be more limited frequently.
For example, in Beboa Village, as we know, the Coastal Commission has just approved finally, after six years of sitting on, our request to reduce the requirements on parking for certain types of retail. Have we seen any impact of that? And more, I mean, we do have a major development, two major developments coming forward with Beboa Village Theater and Beboa Fun Zone. Just anecdotally, are you getting calls in from other businesses now that our parking requirements have been relaxed?
No, Councilwoman Dixon, we haven't gotten any more calls, but those two projects, which is the Fun Zone and the Beboa Theater, as you mentioned, those are going to be big stimuluses for that region. And once people understand what's happening with the Fun Zone, I feel like there's going to be a lot more momentum for redevelopment of the Beboa Village. As Beboa Village has that overlay, we're... As Balboa Village has that overlay, that's what the other study is doing, is looking, can we implement overlays in other parts of the town? And we're trying to understand that through that study, and that's what we'll, we'll bring back at a later time.
So I would be supportive of making these adjustments on the gross floor area, the bicycle, ride share, absolutely. The parking waiver. And I think we probably should look at it in Luffy parking program, just to kind of understand that better, reasons why we had it, then it was stopped, and then maybe why we should have it again. Could you clarify, restaurants or retail that have their own private, have their own private property that contains the parking, well, specifically to restaurants who don't have their own parking spaces or parking lots, and they want to do outdoor dining? How is that going to happen?
Well, right now, we don't have a provision to allow them to utilize the public areas, the public spaces. So if anybody would like to propose that, there has to be a fee. These is the public lands. Sometimes it's Thailand, sometimes it's city land. And they have to compensate the city to utilize the public lands for that. Right now, we don't have anybody that has offered or asked for, for that. But if they do, we'd have to value it. We do have some of the farmer's market and CDM that's utilizing public parking lots, and so they do pay a fee to the city. So that's how we would approach it.
Okay. Well, I'm, I appreciate you doing this phase one. I think it's time we look at this and we'd be supportive to our businesses and just understand the impacts. But I'm supporting all of those. I think we'll look at them more carefully and specifically when you come back with further recommendations, but I'm supportive. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, sorry, I missed that comment on the, in Luffy parking program. I would only support it if we actually planned on building parking. I know Laguna Beach has had this for a long, long time. They collect it. And then I, for the life of me, I don't know of any parking they've built at all. So if we're going to do this, let's actually have a place we're going to do it at. But I, I just, I don't know of any of those. By the way, one of the, one of the codes to take a look at is Fountain Valley, actually, on the way that they've approached the fast casual side of things. They just recently updated their parking study, and that was one of the cities I had taken a look at. So anyway, thanks.
Mr. Plon.
Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate staff working on this. I know it's been an interesting year for parking in general, and trying to figure this out probably wasn't the easiest in these last couple of years. The only thing that struck me, and it was actually from Councilmember O'Neill's comments, is that moving to a gross floor area against net public area, it, it adjusts against use. And so if you are operating a fast casual, I think that was the intent originally of using net public area, because traditionally, if you are a fast casual or something that is operating at a higher rate, you have less net public area than a traditional sit-down. And so maybe that could be something that's just tied more to independent use, rather than, you know, blanketing it out with different preclusions on every one. Because, I mean, typically, in, in a full, full-service restaurant, you, you run about a 50-50 ratio. And so I think that, that 100 square feet really keeps us at the higher level of what our standard already was, which I think is good. And, you know, kind of keeps us where we wanted to be without opening up the floodgates, you know, especially since we've added things like bicycle and ride share reductions. And I think that's probably where we need to be. We don't need to be in a 50% reduction, but maybe 10 to 15 is fine for a lot of the city of Newport Beach. And to incentivize those kind of ideas that we do want people taking Ubers and Lifts in, and we do want them riding their bikes and maybe golf carts. But I think that's, that's a great point. The parking waiver, I think, is just good policy. And then in Luffy, you know, I concur with kind of what was said up here, but I do like the idea that if we have a fund that helps spurn the parking problem from a broader perspective and maybe, you know, a more ingenuative one, where we are looking at individual spaces where we can alleviate these problems, you know, from more of a holistic level of where are we going to add new parking structures? How are we going to fix Corona del Mar and Balboa Island and a lot of the other areas to still let visitors come in and not, you know, hurt the residents in those areas? I think that would be great, and I don't know a huge amount of businesses that would have issue with that. And so I think, you know, this was a great study and really commend you guys on it. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
I, I think most of you have more experience with this than I do. I know you've been talking about this for years. I'm going to have to be brought along on this a lot more than I am right now, because I, I don't think of myself as having the mentality of, don't confuse me with the facts. But in this case, I'm sort of thinking, we're going to have experts and we're going to have statistics that say that we can reduce the number of parking spaces. But my personal experience is telling me in Corona del Mar specifically, and as, as Noah said, on Balboa Island, you know, there are some places that I don't see that there's an abundance of parking spaces. So I think really being site-specific on some of these things is going to be really important. And, I mean, I know that my residents are constantly complaining to me that, that the restaurants are taking up all the parking spaces in their neighborhoods. So, and you know, people do need to use their garages and that sort of thing, but when you live in a home, you think that maybe there's an hour sometime during the week that you could unload your groceries in the front of your house. And we've heard the stories of employees that save a place, and then when their replacement comes, their replacement takes their space on the public streets so that residents are never able to park in front of their house. So, you know, I'm not opposed to anything at this point in time, but I'm just not there yet. It's going to take, and I think it may take some real education for our citizens to see how we, how we could even get to this point. So that's where I am right now.
Thank you. It occurs to me that we're going through a revolution with, between, you know, the amount of housing that's going to be built and the amount of housing that's been built in the last couple of years. And, you know, I took a drive recently through the entire Great Park area, and it's absolutely shocking. And those are the folks that are going to be coming here to go to the beach and to go to their restaurants and all the rest of it. I just, on the face of it, I appreciate the study, but there's never going to be enough parking in this town. No matter what we do, we can build, and there aren't many places we can build a structure, and obviously, and the obvious one is in Balboa is, you know, behind the Fun Zone and that public lot. And, but we're not going to be ripping down buildings and building parking structures. So I don't know, you know, where else we could do this. But I, you know, I go to dinner out a lot, and I, you know, and I, when you get down to Newport Pier area and you're looking around there, it's, it's pretty dang tight all the time. And there's just more coming. And, you know, we're doing it, the state's making us do it, to add more folks. But I understand it as a strategy, if we want to dissuade people from being, jumping in their cars and getting, instead get an Uber or get on the bike, you know, this is one way to do it. It's going to do it for sure, as things get tighter and tighter, people rip and just go, I don't want to do it, so I'm getting an Uber. Maybe that's a good thing, I don't know. But I don't, and I'm sure the study is, you know, obviously, it's really well-done. But there's sort of, when I look out at the reality of the world we live in now, and I've been here for 50 years, that's, it's really changed. And so maybe it's not a big, a big issue, it's just the fight for parking gets tougher. And people have to drive around a little more to find the parking, all the rest of it. So it's, you know, we're, I, I just can't imagine taking parking away and having it work well. So, thank you.
Can you say one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you. One thing I learned when we went through the Balboa Village parking analysis, the relationship, or the requirements that the city, through the current parking requirements imposes on business, defines the kind of businesses that come to Balboa Village, for example, or anywhere in the city. But, and that's when the epiphany occurred in my own mind, when I realized by relaxing the parking requirements for a restaurant, for example, in Balboa Village, then we are, and we didn't eliminate them, we just relaxed them, then it allowed, instead of a nail salon, we could bring in a restaurant. And so that is where the light went on in my mind, that our parking requirements are constraining the type of businesses that can be successful in, in our parking-constrained communities. And so my approach to looking at this is, how can we make our business composition successful in the peninsula in this heavily parked area? I also feel, point number two, that we'll never have enough parking regardless. We don't have enough parking now. I don't know if we're, we're eliminating parking, it, it's just that we're saying, businesses, you don't have to have 10 parking spaces. If you're going to open a restaurant, you need three, or you need to get a waiver, or whatever that formula is going to be. But I also know, we've tried in the last couple of years, two years ago, pre-COVID, to explore a public parking structure, or privately-owned parking structure, or public-private parking structure in Balboa Village, and also 30th Street, I guess it is. I'm still open to that idea, because these are public parking space, public lots, city-owned lots, that we might be able to have some kind of a joint partnership with a private entity, because we could possibly, and we may be able to go down. We've done a lot of parking analysis of those, well, at least the one at Balboa Village, the Palm Street parking lot. Even if we build those lots, I don't know if we'd ever have enough regardless. But I think we have to open our, we have, the city has now looked at parking requirements as we are doing now. And I think a lot of things have changed in terms of forms of transportation, as we all know, bicycles, Uber, Lifts, et cetera. And what kind of businesses, the economic impact, and are we constraining economic, the kinds of businesses that choose to invest? In fact, when the Balboa Village parking idea came forward, I remember a commercial real estate broker saying to me, this is a game changer for Balboa Village, and look where we are. And I know when I had conversations with the party, both parties involved with the theater and Fun Zone, telling, they did not really know fully about that initially, and then they looked into it, and it became a game changer for them as well, and a factor of their commitment. So that's how my mind is working, to see how can we enhance business and different kinds of businesses to be successful in our communities? And maybe parking has been a constraint. We're not going to eliminate the requirement, but just be more partners with our businesses to attract different kinds of businesses. Thank you.
Public comment?
Chuck Van Zer, I apologize for coming again, but I think I can bring 40 years of experience of developing and operating major shopping centers and regional malls, which is predicated on a parking paradigm. And I believe that the industry, that, I'll just call it the industry, which means both the planning side of the world, the consumer side of the world, the retail side of the world, and the landlord side of the world is changing in the way it views how parking and rents, meaning being able to attract tenants, and you attract tenants because customers get, are attracted by them, and it works. The 1 to 10 ratio was the norm for many, many years in retail, just, just an absolute, excuse me, for restaurants as a norm nationally. That has declined and moved down in contemporary use across the country. It's now more in about a four per thousand ratio or less in terms of a ROTE requirement. Retail is moving from five per thousand down to about, about a three to three and a half per thousand nationally across the board in the retail arena. Office is moving from five per thousand down to four to three and a half. Apartments are moving from two per unit down to one and a half to one and a quarter, and some fractional measure per unit for visitor parking set-asides. Parking supply, as dictated by owners, the landlord, and the governments, are moving down. Some of it is due to a rationale, a rationale that is, that is evolving out there that says, let's make parking harder so that more people will go to what I call the Uber format, and will get less cars off the roads, and people who go to restaurants and also when buying liquor, more of them will live to get home. There's that philosophy that's out there. But I would suggest that the city look at getting, being less focused on ROTE indexes, more focused on local condition. Have an ordinance that gives your planning director more discretion. Give that director a 20% variance, but let them go up to, say, 40% if they come back to the planning commission and get their buy-in. And let's have a larger percentage than 10 for a, a working, functional Uber pickup zone in a situation, which facilitates and also a, a reduction in parking for an operating real-time ability for restaurants to, to deliver more stuff to homes on delivery and have the facilities for that, so it's not just taking up a parking space out in front for the driver to wait for 20 and 40 minutes to get the food so he can leave, he or she. You know, let's provide for those incentives and move, and start moving that way and get out of the ROTE spaces per parking. Another concept that wasn't discussed tonight that's happening in real time is shared parking, concept of mixed use. You can have restaurants, a cluster of restaurants next to an office building, have some common parking, not just a shrub line that blocks. And when the daytime--
Thank you very much.
--the daytime use for restaurants works better. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Scarborough. You guys are going to have to stop picking such interesting subjects, or I'm going to get up here and keep talking. I was talking to one of the restaurant owners this week about a restaurant in Corona del Mar, and he pointed out something that hasn't been discussed here, and I don't know how you incorporate this, but he said that he pays about $3,000 a month in an off-site parking agreement so that he can have a valet who takes the cars from his parking, restaurant, parking lot to an off-site and then brings them back. And I don't know how you work that into this, but it is something that would be a consideration. That's a cost to the business. He's not going to recover that with a $5 per car fee. And if we reduce his parking further, it's just going to make him required, require more off-site parking at additional costs to the business. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Avery, members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. First, first of all, this, this discussion is tied to item eight on your consent calendar, where you're going to be asked to initiate the actual amendments to our zoning code and local coastal program. I didn't quite gather this from either that item or the agenda announcement for this, which says this, that the city is conducting a comprehensive review of the city's parking code, which covers commercial, residential, and all sorts of things. And when we saw the presentation, it's strictly about commercial parking standards. So if that is true, if that is the case, I would suggest in item eight, that the resolution that just says it's a review of the municipal code related to parking regulation, it should say commercial parking regulation, if that is indeed what you're directing the staff to do. And then the second comment I had is about the long delay in the implementation of the Balboa Village Parking Management District. I could be wrong, as I often am, but my recollection is that long delay was actually the responsibility of the city staff, who was hesitant to present it to the Coastal Commission out of fear of rejection, rather than the Coastal Commission sitting on it for all those years. It took some time, I think, to build up the rapport where we thought it would have a chance of passing. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you. Good evening, David Tanner. Again, I want to bring in the Coastal Commission. As I indicated previously, there's going to be a reduction in parking as a result of these new laws. And trying to get that through the Coastal Commission, any reduction that we're going to have in a code, good luck. That's going to be very difficult to get. You talk about where you're going to put parking structures, Superior and Coast Highway, the existing parking facility where you want to build the bridge, where you want to put fill dirt in there. That's an ideal place. I think other opportunities are right along Newport Boulevard, over by the Chicken Coop. On that side, across from Hoag Hospital, there may be some of those buildings there that you can take down, put some subterranean parking structures there so they don't stick up a long way, at least-- up a long way, at least looking at it. I think that what I asked you to do at a prior city council, I'm going to ask you to do again, and that is, don't let any new construction off the hook without paying their fair price. New construction should mitigate their impacts. And I'm not talking just about CEQA, I'm talking about traffic. That's not CEQA now when, when you're looking at affordable housing. So whatever the impact is from new construction, they should pay now or be obligated to pay in the future, which might mean paying their fair share for sewer line upgrade or a parking structure, something like this. But they're on the hook if they go do some of these units to pay their fair share if it, in fact, turns out that they need to do it. So the other thing I think we need to do is we need to incorporate these laws in the General Plan Update Environmental Report, whenever that's coming out, whatever the scope of that is. These laws are existing regulatory conditions, and they need to be discussed in the EAR for the General Plan Update. So finally, I'd like to suggest that, I liked the first slide where it showed, I believe it was McFadden Square down by the Newport Pier. When you look at the parking, public parking there, that's a really inefficient use of the land. And it might be nice to have a planning study done as to what could be done other than parking in that area and come up with ways in which we could get more people, because we're looking for tourism, more people in that area. How are we going to do it? Parking structures with shuttles? I think it would be nice, particularly if we're going to talk to the Coastal Commission. We've got electric bicycles, they're all over the place if you look in that area down there, and it's only increasing. So perhaps there's a way that we can come up with a plan that makes sense where we can say to the Coastal Commission, here, we're going to end up with a net of more people in this area, and maybe we can put some restaurants that are on the beach, like Huntington Beach has done, where you see some of their little snack shacks. They're very popular on the weekends in the summertime now with many tourists coming, and they love the idea of being very close to the beach or on the beach. So I would suggest
Thank you.
One or more test sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Now's the time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we have anything?
Yeah, just to confirm, just for Brown acting, I'm being a stickler. It sounded like everyone was supportive of having the Planning Commission take a look at these issues, those recommendations. Okay.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. So recently, my dog JT and I made a voyage to Santa Barbara to solve their cliff erosion problem. It's sick. For those of you who don't know, erosion is an existential threat to the stokers who live on the cliffs there because they constantly live in fear that their parties are going to fall into the ocean. So we gathered the best and brightest minds of IV to take part in a dank tank to come up with a solution. And after many hours of deliberation, I'm proud to say, we found one. We have determined that the best course of action was to do the world's longest beer bong from the cliffs down to the beach. This heroic feat, we hope, will cement the cliffs into the record books of Santa Barbara County as a legit landmark. Historic landmarks, as you all know, are afforded special protection from the government. Therefore, I come to you, the powers that be, to formally request that the cliffs from Free Birds Burritos all the way to the Sea Lookout Park be officially recognized as a place of special historic interest. This ruling will ensure that the Del Playa Drive will survive, along with the parties that the Dank residents throw regularly, regularly for an eternity, which means forever, which is like a crazy concept. JT will fill you in on the details of the guise. All right, late.
What up, council? I am JT Parr. I did not volunteer to be the chugger. I was picked by an esteemed group, not unlike this one. There were some moments where I didn't know if it would work. The science had to be exact, and we had to adapt when it wasn't. Foam was a concern, so an expert pour was necessary. As the chugger, I had moments of harrowing self-doubt, and I had to rely on the words of a total legend to steel my nerves. Being surrounded by environmentalists, I chugged with raw intensity. I was surprised how easy it went down, totally without a hitch. Although I did end up throwing up, but it still counts. Council, we are asking, in light of this heroic deed, that you formally recognize the Isla Vista Cliffs as a place of special historic interest so we can protect them forever. Will you do that, council? Council?
This is your chance to make commas, not to ask questions.
I totally feel you, but like a lot of the residents of like Santa Barbara are kind of relying on us to get them like confirmation on this. So is there like any kind of just a, I don't know, indication you could give me?
You do know you're in Newport Beach, right?
Yeah, they're not doing a in-person city council meetings in Santa Barbara right now.
Okay, so this council doesn't have any jurisdiction over Santa Barbara. This is Newport Beach.
Right. Do you guys know any of the city council members in Santa Barbara?
I do not, no.
Well, council, it was still a really great experience, and we're very proud of the work we did there, and we're still hopeful that we'll be able to get this designation and protect our cliffs. Thank you very much, and have a very dank day.
Throw it up means it doesn't count.
Mayor Avery, members of the council.
You're done. Mr. Mosher.
Yes, thank you. My name again is Jim Mosher, and on a matter even farther afield from Newport Beach than Santa Barbara, I wanted to comment on closed session item Agenda Item Roman 4A, in which, according to the Agenda Announcement, this council is going to be meeting in private to speak with the city attorney about a lawsuit that's in northern Ohio. It seemed strange to me, when I decode the announcement, it is telling me and the public that the City of Newport Beach is a party to this lawsuit in Ohio. And not only that, but the city attorney thinks that publicly discussing the case with you would prejudice the city's position in this lawsuit. I find all of that very strange, but it must be true because it's in the agenda. And if it is true, I, as a member of the public, would certainly appreciate knowing what other far-flung lawsuits the City of Newport Beach is spending taxpayer money on and why. It would seem that we could have a comprehensive listing of the lawsuits that we're involved in, and I have not seen that ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda or non-agenda items? All right, seeing none. Before Mr. Hart makes the closed session announcement, do any council members have any conflicts to announce? All right, seeing none, we're recessed until 7:15.
7:15. Yeah, I think there may be a conflict.
I'll note a conflict on the first item just due to equity ownership. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and do the closed session announcement. City Council during a closed session discussed closed session Agenda Items number 4A through C, including meeting with legal counsel, discuss the case entitled Enray National Prescription Opiate Litigation, as well as labor negotiations with the unions and unrepresented employees, including city manager, city attorney, and city clerk that are set forth under Items 4B through C. And the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk will recuse themselves from discussions that could impact their financial interest. Thank you.